Listen, the rat race comes.
Look out assassin!
It's on me!
Assassin rat failed miserably!
She's cursed too much!
Ammunition! Bombs for all here!
Prepare yourselves, rats stink all over.
Oh, here they come!
Form in swarm!
Foul warpstone machinery!
The son is dead!
I'll use my shield, you use your weapon.
Listen!
Kill this thing!
That's what rats want to hear!
You got the whole class!
You went limp when that glava touched you, fight it next time!
Backstabber!
He's a decent rat, but can you do it again?
Fresh arrows are always welcome.
Supplies available.
There's potions here!
May this potion cure more than it causes.
Oh, here they come!
They're swarming!
God knows what foul stuff is in there!
Look out rattling gun! The rat wants to shoot me dead!
Judgment is served!
If not by my hand...
Rage of stigma, the horns are coming!
All will see!
More black rats!
Head wizard, it's time for the draw!
I think we'll die!
The black rat is!
Too much magic!
More storm vermin, is there no end to them? Come black rat, taste the steel! Let the black rat come, I'm ready for him! Oh, another of these blackbers comes to challenge me!
Want to bet for how long?
Ammunition!
Any second now!
Oh, here they come!
Stay together, take them in pairs!
The top one's vulnerable!
Well fought sergeant!
Still standing I see, I approve, sort of. You hear that?
Oh, here they come!
I heard gas chat.
Nobody here!
A vile standstill, see those fire rats!
Out of the way, the gas rat's gonna explode! By the unlectus fist! Snort her arm!
Why the, uh, Bretonnian dog? Put your feet on the ground!
What? Yeah, I'm awake, I wasn't napping.
A potion stash!
Get ready!
Ammunition, take all you can! There, ammunition!
Oh, here they come!
Get to running!
Rattling gun! Storm vermin's fired!
They're carrots, they're highs, if it's time to strive.
Rattling globe! That's all!
Another of these blackbers comes to challenge me!
Hit back, gas rat!
Come on then you blackbird bastard!
Must I put an eye on your leg? You look ridiculous!
Not these blackbird bastards again!
Grenades incoming!
For the head wizard, that should do it!
There's poison on the wings.
Shame, join my brothers in arms!
Storm vermin!
Is that coming here yet? You know the drill, be on guard!
Oh, here they come!
The question is, will there be enough for us all?
Fire away watcher! Let the black rat-
You're ineffective witch, aim for the head instead! Look, a warrior rat!
Shut the stage!
Storm vermin!
That did it!
Bomb!
Here, ammunition!
Don't forget to fill up on supplies!
There's a bomb, here!
Oh, here they come!
Get ready, the pack is coming!
When they come, leave some for me!
Yes, fire is a great purifier indeed!
Look out, an unholy substance!
Every dead rat man strengthens my faith in you elf!
Shut up!
Ammunition!
Got to run!
Man, hurry!
Get off me! Backstabber!
Assassin rat!
You're the assassin!
Not bad! No rest for the wicked, stay ready!
Foul warpstone machinery!
I've got a shield, I'll get their attention!
Not for this load!
The rattling gun is on me, now is your chance! Taking fire from the rattling gun! One more dead rattling!
That's the worst thing I've seen so far!
You're no better than baggage witch!
Upstench!
Storm vermin, getting trounced!
Keep it up so bad!
You know the drill, be on guard!
Oh, here they come!
Come vermin, my blade sings greetings!
Keep your eyes peeled!
Yes, burn!
I could have killed the wizard!
Apparently you forest won't ever come! Can hear a gas rat!
What? Yeah, I knew it, I wasn't napping!
Kill the vermin before it grows!
They call these arrows, they'll have to do.
Oh, here they come!
Look out!
Our last hope is there to reach!
Black ogre!
Black ogre, coming at us!
Die!
Black ogre! I can hear them!
I'll keep the winds ten against me!
Liberation falls!
Don't be greedy with all the kills sergeant!
Still alive, huh? Aren't you the surprise doctor there?
Oh, I hope it heals better than it tastes!
You hear that?
Oh, here they come!
I hear the swarm!
This is where I should raise my shield! Ah, what a homecoming this turned out to be!
Good, a nice crunch to that slab!
Tom, I need your strength! Time's on for us!
Potions! It's small, filthy, and noisy, just like a dwarf!
Bastard!
Yeah, burn them!
Still alive, huh? Want to bet for how long? Any second now!
Oh, here they come!
I barely see your weapon move elf!
The clan, the clan! I will die!
Leave them in flames! Incoming pack!
Fighting victory, huh? Enjoy it while it lasts! No time to rest slack jaws!
Oh, here they come!
There's a pack closing in! The spirit of a dying creature!
Rattling gun!
Like all assassins, shot on purpose!
Target, the gunner's dead!
We're walking into a scryer ambush!
The rat gun is aiming for me!
This is no place for someone like you, even less one of your age!
It's no place for any of us Gruber!
Damn creature! One way down, I let more come! Prepare yourselves, rats stink all over!
You hear that? Assassin!
Oh, here they come!
Look out assassin! You'll only have to watch over us!
I've got a shield, I'll get their attention!
Let them scum!
Burn it off!
Assassin's dead, watch for others!
The head wizard is going in!
A challenger! On your feet wizard!
Well, I didn't fall asleep so you weren't terrible like us.
I must heal!
Supplies are here, whether you deserve them or not.
Oh, here they come!
I hear the swarm! Come out, come out, whatever you are!
Good strike!
Go with her!
Don't go near it!
Stand back, those tanks are going to explode!
Get ready, it's about to throw its poison!
Four eliminated, not bad! Get ready!
Oh, here they come!
Stand ready!
Watch out! Rattling gun!
Are the gunner's targets, you kill it! Get down, shaven gun!
Witch, change your tactics, aim for the head!
That did it!
The gunner's dead!
You know the drill, be on guard!
Oh, here they come!
Don't look so frightened lumberfoot, it's only a hero!
Gunner's dead!
Storm vermin! More storm vermin, there's no end to them! Come on shaven!
Storm vermin!
Let the black rat come, I'm ready for him!
Gunner's off the me, you back there! Don't let them down! Shaven gunner!
Get out of this murdering life!
Our dead rattles! So many shores, such perils! It's short for a lumberfoot!
Just a moment!
Ammunition! They call these arrows!
No rest for the wicked, stay ready!
Oh, here they come!
Print carefully, a spy of nobody here!
Not a good sign, stand well back!
Watch out, storm vermin!
Gunner, hit the head, and only the head!
The palest! She calls me! Won't turn her, they can't mock us!
A black rat, a challenger last!
Find that, preachy grabby one! Not in the body, and it's head wizard! Undersustained attack!
I'll use my shield, you use your weapon!
Storm vermin! Shut the stage! Storm vermin!
Look at it, head wizard!
Come on, taste the steel!
Did you learn that story?
Standing I see, I approve, sort of!
Supplies for our ranged weapons!
Get ready!
Not as fast as you make out!
I suppose a torturer learns much about life.
Oh, here they come!
The question is, will there be enough for us all?
The gun, the gun! Cut, cut! What the...
Hit the head, wizard, that should do it!
A black rat, a challenger at last.
There, gas rat! Look out, strangler!
Oh, they're here alright.
Attack master, team! Fight them, light hammers! More scythe, stormvermen!
Another of these black birds, a challenger.
Watch those globes! Where the globin is!
We've got that filthy gas rat.
Must you keep jumping? Have some decor, haven't you? Another dead rat man!
Give this one!
Taking victory, huh? Enjoy it while it lasts. Supplies for you lot! Here they come.
Pray to Sigma, the hordes are coming. Blessed Sigma, this help does your work!
Behind the turret!
All will die, die!
Four eliminated, not bad.
Bastard!
Any second now. Here they come.
Time for some rat catching. You had your way, spellcaster, I'll give you that.
Flank that contraption!
You're an effective witch, aim for the head instead! There's a rattling gunner about. Flank the flak for the thing!
Kill him, rattling!
Get ready, the pack is coming. Say batter, I shield, you kill, alright?
Oh, they're into finessing that though.
Still alive! Wonder how long? Prepare yourselves, rats stink all over. Here they come.
The pack master feigned, find the hook!
Don't let it scare you!
We got a hook rat!
Not so lively, huh?
Wizard, the head is their weak point! The gnawing bone! We can hide it!
That takes a steal!
I wasn't napping. Supplies have arrived. Oh, here they come.
The arch, Krubatea! By the arch, Lector's fist!
Every step makes a difference. Oh, Lily, the size of it! Ah, bomb!
Vermin spawn, ogre, listen.
Steady, steady!
Like a freaky guy.
Kill it with everything you have! Fire away, they're coming! Bring that abomination down! Someone shut up, that rat ogre! Oh, god's curse! Unveil!
Come, Sigrid, there's still many rats to kill.
Rat ogre coming for us! By the arch, Lector's fist! Rat ogre, coming at us! The rat ogre's down, thank God. Bless her, the rattling comes! Maybe a drink will get my...
Ruin half! Burn them! Burn them all! I didn't bring packed lunch! My goodness, dear food. No time to rest, slack jaws. Here they come.
They think sheer numbers will prevail.
This is where I should raise my shield.
Where are those furry bastards? Hold your nerve, they can't watch us. By the patriarchal, I'm stopping!
I tell you thick, I am on it!
Your lumberfuts has a certain style!
On with you, witch hunter!
Did the red come in here yet?
Ammunition, should you have a care? Ha, praise the comet, ammunition!
Here they come.
I'll kill every one of them. Every dead rat man strengthens my faith in you, elf.
That they die!
Nice peel, people. She's attractive, I'll give her that. Kill all you can!
You made a woman smile with that strike!
One way down, no less mournful than...
Here, ammunition!
Get ready.
Footfalls are coming fast.
Slaves of the shadows. The skaven's fostered us.
Look out, runners!
Vermin's scum! That's a gas rat!
Kick back!
Never have I seen a major price so desperate to end this life.
I thought you were a soldier.
Hear that? Master poison! Look out, it's gonna block!
Fight seek, torches!
The witches' spells had their uses.
Standing, I see, I approve, sort of.
Fine, I'll drink it. Look, potion's here, arm yourselves with bombs here!
You know the drill, be on guard. Here they come.
I can hear them. Tal's breath, stay sharp.
A good kill, guess I need to be faster.
Purge the town!
Got some here, but here.
I'll use my shield, you use your weapons. Get ready, it's about to throw its poison. Gotcha!
Lily, a more dangerous.
Gas rat, over there's down!
Go after them!
You think you're perfect, my...
That's dragging the elf, that's my job! You had lip when that... Next time!
You think? Are they paying to get caught, Kruber?
Decent effort, yes, but can we do it again?
Healing draught, don't squander it.
Potion! Hold still, witch hunter!
Good, I'm not ready to die yet, and neither are you, elf.
So got, so got. Here they come.
My nightmare! Party's a six-holies!
More stormvermen, there's no end to them. Another of these black birds, a challenger.
I am coming!
Oh, sorry!
Help me! I'm taking damage!
Found another bomb!
Taking heavy damage! Well, the black rats!
By the eggwinds, strangler!
The rat men will pay for this. I tire of setting you free, Kruber.
More stormvermen, is there no end to them?
By Sigma, walking artillery! Now is not the time to stand alone! By the hammer and the bell, you shall not fail me! I've slain the rattling!
That hurt, but you'll hurt more! Such stench.
Stalking heavy damage!
A black rat, a challenger at last.
Assassin!
A coin in for you, Kruber. Back to your forest, elf, found a potion!
Stormvermen! Stormvermen! Come, vermin! Potion here, a boon for our health! Do not trust in hope, it will betray you! Only faith and hatred sustains!
Healing draft, over here!
You hear that?
Bomb!
Healing draft!
Here they come!
Come, vermin, my blade sings greetings!
Bombs here! Found bombs! Where are those rat bastards? More dead rats!
Sigmar calls, mate!
Don't look so frightened, lumberfords, it's only a few rats! Look out, rattling gun!
Don't relax, that's when they'll come! Not in the body, burn its head with it!
For it to end its life!
Come on, hat, wiggle up its hump!
Be more careful, action arm! The gutter is for me, you blankets! Come, black rat!
I was asleep, so you weren't there, I guess.
No time to rest, slack jaws! Oh, here they come!
Rat ogre!
They seek to surround us!
Gas rat, pieces of gold!
Fireball and blast! With existing sergeants!
Saw teeth of a rat big bastard again!
Never have I seen a maid fly so desperate to end its life!
Dirty rotten imbecile, rats! The elf has perished! I must not be alone, nor talk to myself! I must medicate myself! Protect the flanks, in case they come to the... Rat ogre! Rat ogre! Kill it with everything you have! Rat ogre! Bomb round! Stinky rat, old rogue, piece of trash! Look, potions here!
I will survive this, vermin! Roar all you like, I'll bring you down! It reeks of black powder! Avon!
Ammunition, should you have a care?
Right, ogre, rat ogre! Size of it! Is that my blood? Flare, shoot me!
Not much left in you!
Don't you hate me because these pills won't?
Just stay alive! Ha, praise the comet, ammunition! I'm taking a good beating! I'm taking damage! Bring that abomination down! Get back up, elf! Take my hand and say no more about it!
That's a rat ogre!
Let your blind, rat ogre! That, full! Kill it with everything you have! Bring that abomination down! Medical supplies! Steady, steady! At last, ammunition! Rat ogre!
Another big brute!
Decent effort there, but can you do it again?
I need to rally! Let me heal you maiden! Give me a moment! That's better!
No rest for the wicked, stay ready!
Assassin's closing in!
Oh, here they come!
Lily has watched over us! There's a gunner about! Draw the gunner's fire!
Assassin, no more! Okay, Sigmar, see it! The rattling's dead!
My wounds run deep!
Don't have a healing spell! Heavy damage!
Storm vermin!
Die!
Storm vermin! Chastity, storm vermin!
Witch, change your tactic, aim for the head!
Not bad!
Ammunition! At last, ammunition!